How to talk.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Hello, welcome, welcome, welcome.
Well, it was quite a process, but they're good.
They're good.
In respect of your time and energy and your very great timeliness yourself, we're going to try and start the meeting. Welcome, welcome, welcome. On another beautiful, sunshiny day in the most phenomenal summer in forty years. I'll just do -- Amanda has turned on the tape, so we are now officially on tape. Jim Burnett, have you called in? Well, he's in America, so he's going to try to call. I'm just going to notice for the record who's here. Bob Churchill is here. Penny Goodstein is here. Joelle Hall is here. Andy Holleman is here. Amanda Moser is present. Tim Potter is present.
He's still numb, but I can hear him.
He was just extracted from --
So if I start dribbling water, then I'm dead.
He just came from the dentist, so he -- He texted me from the dentist and said, "I'm in the chair. I'm going to try to get there." And I said, "Okay, good." Carolyn Ramsey?
Hello.
Hello, Carolyn. Cheryl Richardson?
Hello.
And Arlis Strzelski. Terrific. In the audience, we have Assembly Member Tim Steele and we have Citizen Eugene Haberman. That's just all that was for the record, so everybody knows who's here. Thank you. It is July 25th, and my goal is that we will meet until about 1:30 today. And I thank you for your arrival and presence. We have before us what are called Action Minutes. I'm going to ask Amanda to give us a description of what Action Minutes are, since her staff had prepared it.
Amanda Moser, Action Minutes just reflect the action that occurred at the meeting. I did put additional information, whereas I put the whole calendar that we decided upon under Item 4, and I listed everyone that was present, all the members, along with the Rules Committee members that were present.
And I thank you, Amanda, and that means that our minutes will reflect official actions that we've taken, but they will not reflect the tone and the texture of the brilliant conversation we have with one another. So I say that just so that you will have a formal record of our actions, but our discussion and the -- we've been a wolf of our discussion will be up to us to recall. Is there -- just to be normal, let's have a motion to accept the Action Minutes of the July 11 meeting.
So moved.
They're moved by Bob Churchill and seconded by Arlis to accept the Action Minutes. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objections, the Action Minutes are accepted. Thank you. You also have before you an agenda, and it is proposed for your consideration. I prepared it. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Are there any items you would like to add to the agenda?
I don't know if we adopt.
Bob moves that we adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Carolyn. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to the adoption of the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is adopted before us. In my informal email to you, I said, "I would love it if you guys would think about the context of the public process and be prepared today to talk a little bit about that." So that's really the principal objective that we have for the day. You'll notice Item Number 4 on the agenda, since we went whipping through 1 through 3, is the discussion of the management of semi-public hearing, elements of a hearing, how should the elements of a public hearing be managed? And these are just elements, pieces, not in any particular order or priority or anything else. But I would love to have an open discussion, and I'd ask you to prepare some thoughts about it, about the elements of a public hearing and any recommendations that you have for consideration with this group. Our objective is we'll have a discussion. Eventually, we will get to the part where we will actually have some recommendations that we would like to offer for the Assembly. So that's the point of the discussion is where we're going. I'd also like to have the record reflect that we've been joined by Dick Trainey, Assembly member and member of the Rules Committee. Thank you for joining us. You bronze God there over there with your --
Thank you, my son.
Sunshine. Anyway, welcome, Dick. So with that, it's open for anybody who would like to offer some thoughts about the public hearing process. Okay.
I'm just looking at the video of that previous discussion.
The video of the public hearing?
The public hearing.
On the --
On the bill.
AO-63.
Yeah, AO-63, yeah.
Okay. I just want everybody to know that you can simply go to that and watch the public hearing of AO-63, which was a proposal to be able to structure what the public hearing process would be.
It's very important to have the public process, but I did notice that there's no way to stop people from overrunning their time, and if time is a big inspiration, there needs to be some way to limit people when they start chattering on, because one of the issues, I understand, was time. Why the hearing was cut off was that it was taking so much time that the Assembly wanted to go ahead and vote. That's the impression I got. So I don't know how you cut people off, but in the video, there was one guy who kept wandering on and on and on, and his Assembly Chairperson kept saying, "Please stop." "Oh, I will." And he kept reading. How do you stop people so that the Assembly can't say, "Well, they just keep going on and on. We have to cut this off. We have to have a way of doing that." It's a good thought.
I think that Mr. Trainey's a good and bad example, and I'll use him on that basis. I believe the Chair may actually have a button or should have a button that actually shuts the microphone down.
Anybody install the push all the microphones off? This is my Teresa Overmeyer button.
Excuse me. Both of you were talking at the same time. Jim said a button to turn off the microphone. You had a button that would do what?
Turn off. This is my Teresa Overmeyer. So, you know, that is something, and it's a difficult situation for a Chairperson to be in.
Right.
But they have to be, and every personality handles it differently, but you're right. Managing that time is very important. From the public's side, it's very hard on some issues to actually get enough out in three minutes. It's really tough. There were some interesting things in some of the other communities' ordinances, and this is why I'm going to use Dick for an example. Dick, in the past, has run really good meetings, and he will tell people that their time is up. He'll ask them to summarize quickly. If they don't, he does have the option of pushing the button and cutting that off, and that really does get the point across. And having, once that is established, then everybody else pretty much plays by the rules because they know they're just going to get cut off, and that's embarrassing, and you know, you don't want that to happen. There are times where some Assembly people will ask people if they are, "Do you have anything else to add? Are there anything that you wanted to say that you didn't get a chance to say?" And that's where you risk this thing of rambling on and on and on. And some of the communities, at least one of them, indicated that an Assembly person could not, or the Chair could not, invite them to do that unless it was specifically to an issue or a question, that they couldn't just obligate the microphone because they wanted to let the person continue talking.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things that I got out of some of this, that it's a tough one, but if you're going to run a timely meeting, and if it's a big controversial issue, then you have to get tougher on the three minutes. And it's up to the Chair to do that, and that ought to be the thing.
We have Bob and Andy and Dick Trainey and Arlis.
Andy was first. And I'm going to say, I sort of have a different issue, and I can wait to raise it, but, you know, part of the problem is of this, that it's not always a contentious issue.
Right.
And you watch public hearings where there are only going to be three or four people, and someone's inartfully trying to get their point out, and you know they've got something that matters, and I think that's where that position gets started, of letting citizens take that extra 45 seconds or a minute.
Yeah, and that's a tough one.
But when there's 20 people standing behind them, suddenly the flavor's different. I've got a different issue I'll raise after we kick this around a little bit.
Bob?
Yeah, I guess I look at it a little differently. I run an awful lot of hearings on a lot of contentious issues. To me, three minutes is just about enough to let them know who you are and where you live. I'd like to see us do two things, or look seriously at it, extending that to five minutes. And then organizations, recognized organizations, get 10 or 15 minutes. And I -- my thinking is, and what my experience has been, I think it raises the quality of testimony. I think when you have organization heads testifying, you tend to have fewer of the membership testifying. What I'm looking for is how do we get the very best information to our Assembly people? And if you -- most of the organizations I know say, "Three minutes? One, I have no predictability of when I'm going to be called. I'm not going to go. I've got three minutes." And I think we have sufficient time to really express a well-thought-out opinion. The Assembly's going to get better information, and net effect is we'll probably have less people there. To me, three minutes is awfully short time to express much meaningful. And I do think, from my own experience, we'd end up with total less time used, along with -- and I love the idea of the predictability, and I've seen it very effectively, of when you're going to testify. You know, we can do that electronically and say, "We're going to take the first 150 people. The rest of you can go home. You'll be called at the next meeting." And if we get through 150, no harm, no foul. I just think administratively, we can make this a process that provides much better information to our Assembly people and much more predictability and value to our testifiers. I agree.
We have Dick and Arlis. Dick Trainey?
So I've got to run another meeting. I'm sorry about that. I have another meeting. I've got to get to it. Anyway, it's just a function of the Chair running the meeting. As Chairman, you know how much time people are allotted. They've got three minutes, whether it's three or five, it's the same thing. At three minutes, you ended their testimony, and I had a kill button installed for personal main night lessons. I would hit the button. And one time, she didn't stop after I hit the button. I had Carolyn, who was a security guard, put her in handcuffs and take her out of the meeting. I never had a problem again. She comes in, we testify, she testifies for three minutes, and she's done. It's a function of the Chair to run the meeting. No matter how much time you allot people, the Chair has got to keep a rigid control of the time and be willing to either cut the microphone off or have it removed. And that's just the function of the Chair. Anyway, I've got to run another meeting. I'll see you guys next week.
It's really a tanning session, isn't it? Come on, Dick, be honest.
I've tried to train you a Chris Kirk look-alike.
You're going to have to get taller.
I'll get browner.
Madam Chair, I would not agree with hauling them off in the --
Handcuffs?
Handcuffs. But I do feel that we should not go too far in prescriptions, that the Chair has the rule and the Chair should do a good job in controlling the debate. And so I would object to a -- you know, we're so used to three minutes. I wouldn't object to four minutes, but I think people will use up the time that they have, and you'll still have the problem, except it'll be further out. So I would say standard timetable and a Chair that's disciplined.
Okay. I've got Cheryl and Amanda in line, and then Tim.
Cheryl? A couple of things. For years, we had three minutes for the individual and five minutes for the organization. And it was pulled, I don't know, three or four years ago? That rule has changed. So I was surprised by that, and I know community councils often couldn't have more information than they're allowed to present at a public hearing. The second backup point, I think, is that we got in such trouble this spring, Title 21, 37, and then the 63, because there was such a gap between the public and the Assembly. And that's where the public participation comes in. That's where we need our 10 minutes, 15 minutes, to work things out as a community. And then the public hearing is much more calm, cool, and collected without minions waiting outside right on the table, so.
I don't understand what you meant, the gap between the Assembly and the public.
The Assembly was supporting ordinances that went against the values of large numbers of people in the community. They were very controversial, Title 21, labor law, and then 63 on public hearing process. So all those three were too far removed from public values, and they generated a huge amount of heat and volume of testimony. So I'm saying that if we had a superior, a better, public participation process leading into those ordinances, we wouldn't have had -- we wouldn't have needed 10 to 15 minutes or three minutes times 500 people. Everything would have calmed down. So I really do put most of the blame on those three problems areas, on the lack of quality public participation in this town that spring, well, a couple of years preceding. Does that make sense?
Yes. Okay. Then we have Amanda.
Madam Chair, I think an interesting question is, how can we use technology to assist us with this issue? And we currently have a timer that we use for public hearing. It flashes a light that's green as you can talk, and it turns to red after your three minutes, and there's also a buzzer. But if there's something else that we could add to that, or maybe it's not as audible for the -- I'm -- it's hard for me because I'm often behind the dials, so I don't know if maybe people that are talking can't hear it buzz or don't recognize the light changing colors, but if there's some way that we could educate people that we have that, that might help people stay within their three minutes, or if we change it to additional time. And one thing that I think would be important to discuss, too, sometimes I notice that it's not consistent when people are cut off at Assembly meetings. So if we are limiting to a three-minute time period, that we need to have somehow consistency across the board as to how it's announced that those three minutes or four or five minutes are up.
Thank you. I cannot see you, so I'm wondering if you can angle the table just a little bit so I can see you. That would be fabulous. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Now, we have Tim.
Well, I have a couple things. Something that Cheryl said, you know, we have to remember that the Assembly members and the mayor are people that have been elected and voted in by us, whether you agree with their position or not. They're the ones that we voted for, and that's what we have. So I don't know that it's fair to say that there was this huge gap. They were our elected officials, and I think maybe the issue is majority versus the minority and whose position you actually -- which way you feel on an issue. So, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying about the gap, that they were taking a position, a number of them were taking a position that was much different than what you felt the public's real interest was. You know, we have to respect the fact that whether the electorate was smart or stupid, that's who they voted for, and that's what we get. So we need to make sure that we vote smart in the future and respect the fact that the fact that they got voted in means that they were supported by somebody. And you may not agree with them, but that's how our system works. So I'd be a little bit careful about talking about the gap because it just is the makeup of that. The other thing I'd say is that the Assembly members need to be up to speed on the issue, and they need to be willing to engage and ask questions, because if there are good articulate questions asked of the people that are giving their testimonies and clarification on a point, then that's appropriate additional time beyond the three or five minutes or whatever it is. And when you get into the long-running hearings, there's a tendency for one position or the other to just not ask any questions, and they just let people speak. Any questions? No questions. Move on. And that's where I think it's a little unfortunate, that they just want to get through the issue, let people speak. We're going to do what we're going to do, no matter what we hear anyway. And that's the way it appears to the public. And it would be nice to have those members of the Assembly actually engage the public and ask them questions for clarification so that they can truly understand what their position is, and I don't think that happens. And that, again, goes to who you vote for.
Carol?
I'm going to step into this with the gap thing. I think that 37 was a primary example of very flawed management style and very flawed administration style all the way through the whole thing, to have done it for six months behind closed doors, for have never touched with labor on what they were going to do to labor, and then literally shoving it through the Assembly in two weeks was uncalled-for, unacceptable, and should never happen. So I would call that a huge gap that would rival the Grand Canyon. Now, on the next --
I'm not going to argue that point.
On the next --
You have the lack of speech, Tim.
On the next thing, as far as three minutes, five minutes, 15 minutes, the bottom line is if your teacher tells you to write a paper and a page, when you have this much information, you write it to page and you put it in there. And if somebody says you have five pages, believe me, you can stick a lot more fluff in five pages that you really didn't need to have, that nobody really needs to listen to or take the time to read. So the bottom line is, if somebody wants to up it to four minutes, I'm not going to argue about this five minutes, 15 minutes. I have an issue with that. If you are the president of an Assembly -- of a community council, they can have five minutes, as far as I'm concerned, because they are representing their community council and their neighborhood. But aside from that, special interest groups, otherwise, no, it's community councils, and everybody else gives, you know, three minutes or four minutes, and this body decides four minutes. I'm not going to argue that one.
Okay. I don't have -- I'll come back to you, Bob.
No, no, I'm sure.
I haven't heard from you all at all, so listen to it first and then come back.
And that's unusual. So I'm looking at the agenda that we have before us, and so I'm just going to start with A and say that I don't feel that the public notice process is in any way flawed that I can tell. And so I think that as a part of the public process, that that feels like it's well-managed and well-done, and, I mean, S versions are like a super murky area of this whole problem, and I don't know how to handle that without being able to not get the business done any timely manner, but at the same time, it's an abuse of the public process. The S version is abusive at times. So it's a -- like, that's a deeper thing, right? It's not about the public notice, although it is. You substantially changed an ordinance, now there is no public notice. You drop it on the table and you get to vote on it. That seems sketchy to me, but that's just the -- I want to put that out there in the public notice realm.
Joel, could you clarify? I missed your first part of your -- I didn't catch. What is not flawed?
The general public notice process. You know, just saying that Item A is just general public private --
I missed the words.
-- public notice. I think that that works fine. The public knows when the hearings are.
Okay.
It's relatively easy to find on the website, and you kind of know when things are coming up, and that's good. So I feel like A is, at least from my opinion, like, it's something that is one little beast we don't have to take on, right? With the caveat being, if we have extra time and lots of energy, the S version is plagued with problems, the whole notion, the whole way that whole system works. Now, I really am doing this because I want to get to B. And I want to talk a little bit about sign-up sheets. Sign-up sheets, at the point right now, are at the discretion of the Chair. That's a problem. Any of this public process part that is at the discretion of the Chair, that actually seeks to kind of move people through the system that are really, in a way, in a way that's controlled by the Chair, it's problematic if it's inconsistent. And so my thought is, I actually don't have a problem with sign-up sheets, but it's going to take a long time for the community to understand what a sign-up sheet really means. And I am dead serious about this. If you want to have a sign-up sheet for AO-37, you've got to have a sign-up sheet for the liquor license that you're transferring. It has to be completely consistent from one issue to the next. It can't be like, "Oh, I think 10 people are showing up, so I won't have one. I think 1,000 people are showing up, so I'm going to make you jump through the hoop this other group doesn't have to jump through." So I'm not adverse to them, but if we do the sign-up sheet route, it is a new and prolific task that the muni clerk must now take on to produce a sign-up sheet for every single ordinance, and if that's electronic or physical or whatever it is, it has to be completely consistent across issues and across groups, because otherwise, you will see it be used politically for whoever is in power against whoever isn't in power. So I kind of want to get to that. I'll just dive in one more time on time limits. I actually think three minutes is fair. I do believe that the management of the meetings is the X factor that we deal with when we put a human being up there running a meeting, right? Some human beings are better at running meetings than others are. And Bernie Hall's a very nice guy. He runs a terrible meeting. So he cannot keep people disciplined. He's afraid to cut people off, and it's the whole thing, lucky kids, you know? You give them the consequence once, they don't do it twice. If you cut the first guy off with the kill button, the rest of them will behave. It's herd mentality, right? So it's a matter of that, like, that Chair having the strength of -- and the community knowing that he'll do it, he or she will do it. So I still like the three-minute level, and we can't regulate around somebody's constitutional inability to cut somebody off. There are no amount of rules we could write because they'll just break those rules, too, if they're not willing to do it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to interject. I agree with you about the consistency, and I apply that to everything. If we're going to do X, we're going to do it for everybody, all times, and that's -- I believe that that is the only way there's going to be some predictability in the system for both the Assembly and the public. We have Bob and Penny. Bob?
Yeah, my issue with the timeline is the quality of the information that is put forward, because I know myself, when somebody gets up and says, "I really think Project X is the best thing that ever happened," I don't know how to structure a question around there. Do you really? I mean, what I'm saying is, I think if people are encouraged to have a little more thoughtful and specifics and say, you know, "Why is it?" or "What do you bring to us?" And the thing about the organizations, you know, and I've seen this in a lot of forums, is oftentimes, if you have that representative of the organization coming in, and they're letting their organization know, "I'm going to testify on our behalf," it really ends up with a net gain and allows enough specific information for the Assembly to say, "Well, why do you say that?" or "What are you basing that on?" I just think we could bring the whole level of it up from yays and nays to where we're talking about some specific things that could be helpful in decision-making process. That's where I'm going with it. So that's -- I really think it would gain an efficiency and a value, so that's where I'm coming from, but I understand your position.
What are you saying? Are you saying only a representative should speak, individuals should not?
No, no, no. All I'm saying, Arlis, is when you have somebody that's representing an organization, 1,000, 1,500, 2,500 employees, that they're going to bring something to the table. And frankly, the people I talked to that don't now come to testify say, "Why would I come for three minutes? You know, what am I going to share with the Assembly in three minutes?" And so the administrative things, when I don't know what I'm going to offer, I'll just find another way to make my input. And then I think the whole public misses out. So no, no, I would never do anything to dissuade individuals from testifying. I'm just saying, certain people bring more to the table by virtue of their position and their research and their information.
Who wants to give more time to institutions instead of individuals? We have Penny, Carolyn, and Tim in the line, and I'm just going to add one thought for your consideration, because I'm taking advantage of this, and that is, as a Chair, is on the time constraint, another way to think about the time constraint is having a public record that allows you to add written words. that allows you to add written words that everybody gets to see. It isn't just a quiet email that goes from me to my Assembly member, but that the public record is actually a reflection that where everybody can see what everybody else said. Just for your consideration.
Amanda just raised her hand, just to add me to the list, please.
Okay, so I've got Penny, Carolyn, Tim, and Amanda. Penny?
Okay, two points. One, on the sign-up sheet, it appeared in the hearings on AO 63, people were confused about the sign-up sheet. It appeared that some people, some of the Assembly members said, did you sign up for this last time, you're doing it again, and yes, I did, no, I didn't. It was very, very confusing to everybody what the sign-up sheet even meant, or which hearing it was for, or what day. So, sign-up sheets, I don't know if we should have them or not, but if we're having them, it better be understood by everybody, because they weren't. Even the people participating didn't understand if they were signed up or not, so I thought that was an interesting part of it. An organization testifying for 10 to 15 minutes, my thing is, how do you decide what an organization is? Do you say, does it have to have a 501(c)(3), or category, what constitutes an organization? So, you know, you could get 10 people together who want to call themselves legal, whatever, and want to testify, that okay. I mean, you're going to have to make some kind of rule on that.
Through the chair, I ran a committee for, public committee for 10 years, never had a problem differentiating.
No, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying you need to think about it.
What I'm saying is, just to relax, it's not that difficult to do. But it's the other two, C, Blueberry, and T Club, you pretty much know. There's about five questions you can ask, will tell you whether they're an organization or if it's somebody pretending to be. It's a little less burdensome than you might think.
Okay. We now have Carolyn, Tim, and Amanda. Carolyn?
Okay, I'd like to second sort of what Jane had said, that if you have something to add beyond your three minutes or four minutes, however this pans out, hands out, that can be submitted in testimony, that through the clerk, everybody will get and everybody can read, and I think that that is totally acceptable. The other thing is, what Penny said, I kind of wanted to expand upon that, what is an organization versus a corporation versus a company? And I mean, no disrespect to him, but you're sitting here, someone waiting to pick on you. He is an owner of a company in town. He does not deserve more time to talk about this project than me, the little elderly homeowner whose project is going to destroy my house, so, and my living space. So I'm going to have a really big issue when you say that he should get 15 minutes and I only get three or four. That's not okay. Citizens United did that. That's not okay for our city.
Okay. Carolyn, now I have Tim and Amanda.
Well, I can tell you, and I'm going to delve back a whole layer and go to the Planning Commission, the Plating Board, zoning board, Examinate Appeals, Urban Design Commission. In all of those, they have pretty distinct rules that they have, and like the Planning and Zoning Commission has their rules on public testimony printed on their agenda. And that may be something that's worth doing, so that people can read what the rules are about who's a group, who's a private citizen, who gets three minutes. You know, you can talk about the lights that are up there, you know, you're going to get a green light, this is what that means, you're going to get a yellow light, and then when it turns red, and, you know, I testify there as much or more than anybody, and I don't hear the buzzer. I see the red light, but I don't catch the buzzer. So it is something that may need to be looked at. But the Planning and Zoning Commission, for instance, writes all that down, they cover that at the beginning of the public hearings, the chair actually goes through those to let everybody know that they are written, but then goes through and tells them what it is, explains how the meeting's going to work. And then, individuals have three minutes. Groups like a community council, or it may be Halo, is another organization, it could be a condominium association, they are an organized group, and they get five minutes. Petitioner in that case gets 10 minutes to give their presentation. And there are, you need to remember that there's different types of actions that are going on here. There are rezones that are property-related ordinances that are going forward, laws being changed specific to a specific piece of property. And I don't know exactly why the Assembly put the three minutes for everybody, but you can't present to the Assembly in three minutes what you've spent a year putting together. 10 minutes isn't even enough, but, oh, well. But I think it would be, you know, good for everybody to think about and maybe get a copy of the agenda from the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at, you know, I can certainly provide that, or Amanda can get it. And it does a pretty good job of explaining that, and I think it is an educational process, because a lot of the people that come out for a big issue or even a little issue have never really been to the chambers before. It's a terrible room to try and go up and speak in. It's meant to intimidate, it's got terrible acoustics, the speaker system sucks. When you try and give a presentation, because everybody's in an art, it's hard to have a place that you can even get all the Assembly members to see. If you do put something up on easel that people in the public can't see it, it's just a terrible room to give a presentation, and it always has been. And the fact that the Assembly is sitting up higher, I used to, as terrible as the room was, that Jane remembers, over 3,500 Tudor that doesn't exist anymore, everybody was down at the same level. And you were really talking to someone, not talking to somebody who was elevated two or three above it. And it's intimidating, you watch people go and testify, and people are shaking, people get scared, people decide not to, and they're just intimidated. They'll start crying, all kinds of things, and that's not a good situation to create. And we've created a room in a physical situation that is not the best for public to come out and testify to their elected officials. But it might be, might be good to go back and look at how the other organizations that are recommendation bodies to the Assembly actually run their meetings, and how much time they give different groups and people and individuals to do that. And there may be a difference between a rezone ordinance versus a policy ordinance on something, as far as...
But you might get taken accord over what it is. Well, okay, what I want to say is, thank you for that, and I'm going to ask Amanda to please get a copy of the Planning and Zoning Commission agendas, where it explains what the rules are, and distribute that to this group, though that's very helpful. And, you know, I just want to reflect for a second. I don't think I've been at the beginning of an Assembly meeting for a long time, so I don't even, it didn't occur to me that they might not explain what we're doing here, and that that, how valuable that is for people who come for the first time, how really important that is, very, very important.
Nobody starts at the same place when they come to that meeting.
Right. And I have Amanda, do you see who we have?
I wanted to touch on a few things. Penny had mentioned, when she was watching the 63, and they were trying to confirm if people had testified. What currently it says that you can only testify once on an item, and that's what was going on with the chair, I was actually at that meeting, is people had testified at the previous meeting. And I think it's important to have a discussion about, if there's an S version released, and there's significant changes, what, at what point does it determine that people are allowed to testify on significant changes? And how is that something, I think that there's some concerns with that, I think we have seen that with a few things, where they've rolled out multiple versions that did change it a lot from the original, and at what point do people get to come back and testify? And I did have a note about the leader of the organization, and I appreciate Tim's thoughts on that. I think that that will add a level, a layer of complexity, trying to determine, and I can just tell you from my experience at Assembly meetings, there's a variety of organizations, from community councils to spinarrians against fluoridation, so how do we determine if it's the 10 minutes? Right? Who's an organization, if it's not, so.
That's why we've got the overmind.
I'll come to you later, okay. Thank you, Amanda, I'm going to go, Andy and then Bob.
And actually, that was the point I wanted to make. I don't have a solution for it, but I think we've got to deal with it, and for two reasons.
With what? I'm sorry, which topic?
The, as far as an S version or significant amendments. And sometimes it just happens, honestly, the Assembly listens to testimony, they make changes, they vote, think it goes into effect, and you want that to be able to happen, I think. But in the case of AO 37, we were looking at going to testimony with people going, well, amendments are going to fix this, amendments are going to fix this, but we've got to testify now, before you see the work of the amendments. State School Board meeting last December, we had people come from around the state to testify, and at the opening of the meeting, the chair said, I know that a lot of you are here over this issue, I want you to know that we're going to make changes to what we're proposing, but we're going to open with public testimony, so just be aware that most of your concerns have been addressed. And they went ahead and took public testimony, and then they told us what they were going to do differently, and they had legal counsel to say they had announced, or the topic, but they could stray and make changes. And if you want a really egregious example, just a couple of days ago in North Carolina, late at night, they took a motorcycle safety bill and turned it into an anti-abortion ordinance.
Oh, no.
And, you know, like nine or 10 a night, and then that bill moved to the floor the next morning, early in the morning, to be voted on. So I'm grateful that we're not at the extreme of that, we haven't seen that happen, and yet, clearly, there are people that would abuse the system that way, if they feel like they can get it and run with it. So there does need to be a limit, does need to let the Assembly do their business, I don't have a good answer for it, but there's got to be a way to, I think we're going to have to look at it, or otherwise, we're going to find 500 people lined up one night to testify on something that isn't going to be voted on, but something else is, and that's what we've got to not let happen.
It's a, it's a really good point, and I, I'm going to go back to Amanda for a second and ask you, not to be answered at the second, is if you can look with other municipalities, if any of them have dealt in policy or ordinance in just that issue of, can people testify on a substitute version of an ordinance that has been presented? I think it's a very interesting question, and I'm sure other organizations and institutions have encountered it, and how have they addressed it.
Do you mind if I broaden the question and also ask how they handle S versions in general?
Please.
Because I think that I had a conversation with another, and they handle it a little bit differently, so I think it'd be good to get both of those questions in, and search.
Thank you, thank you. I now have Bob and Tim, or Bob, just, Bob?
What I'd be happy to do is go back and, and what I had, I think it was like a criterion of five things I used to determine as chair, if I would let them testify as organizations, I can try and reconstruct that and send it to you, and we could look at that as maybe a model, but in 10 years, I never really had a problem with when I made determinations about organizations. And maybe that was just bloody luck, but I'll do that and I'll send that to you, too.
Todd?
I can tell you, watching and participating, one of the more frustrating things that happens is when there's an original version, an S1, an S2, an S3, and you don't have any of those, and maybe the S1 you get at the meeting because that was done, but then two other ones get dropped on the table, and you really don't know what's been discussed by which Assembly members behind the scenes as to what they're really going to do, and you haven't even had a chance to look at it, let alone really understand what it says, and you're supposed to get up and testify. And there is one, I can't remember who it was, might have been Citgo, that has, at least talks about S versions or changes, but it really doesn't qualify or quantify how big the change could be, before it has to be out for public notice and be heard again. And I really do think that if they're going to do their normal business, have the version there that they're going to talk about that's been advertised, and then if they want to try and work the issues there, then let them say that they're going to bring forward an S version, and let's hear it again. But having one, two, and three S versions on the table that are all different, that nobody in the room has a copy of, and then the clerk has to try and run back and make another 70 copies or something to get handed out, and then there's maybe an S4 that pops out, it's nuts. And, you know, I don't want to drag on the city's business either, but at some point, there has to be a stop button pushed, and everybody back up, put it out there what we're really going to talk about, and publicize it, and let people come and testify even again, if they need to.
Well, can I jump on to what Tim's saying? Because one of the other side benefits, Tim, of what you're talking about, is that it might actually create an incentive to engage parties earlier in the process, to create the original version to the best possible version, if you're in a hurry, right? As opposed to whip it out one day, but if I don't, if something happens in the week before I turn it in and we have a hearing, I get a bunch of feedback, I can do S2 and 3 or 4 at the meeting, and I haven't lost a day. Well, it's not transparent, it's not public, it's not any of the other things, and so this may be just enough of an inducement to get them to do some of that pre-work a little bit more, in a little bit more, you know, an intentful way, to get the first version as close as possible.
Chair, I can actually tell you that I've been at an Assembly meeting and been there to testify on the original and S1, when an S2 or 3 had come out, and when I got up to testify, was asked by an Assembly person if I had seen the language of that new revised ordinance, to which they already knew that there weren't any available to the public.
Right.
And, you know, what are you supposed to say?
Right. No, you're the only ones who have them.
Yes, say yes.
I wanted to mention a couple of things, we've got Amanda in line, and I, what you said, Joel, is an echo of what Cheryl said, is an echo of what Tim said, which is, if there's more work done on the front end in the development of an ordinance, there's a potential that there'll be fewer S2s, 3s, and 4s popping up, because there would have been a broader conversation. And I don't know that we can legislate that, but I think we can certainly articulate it as a goal going forward and as a value that we...
Well, requiring public testimony on S2 versions, notice and testimony is sufficient inducement, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Because that will be a serious pain in the ass.
So now I have Amanda and Cheryl.
Amanda? It seems like conversation is coming back to the laid-on-the-table items, and so I was just going to ask if the body would like me to also get information on how other jurisdictions handle laid-on-the-tables.
Thank you.
Yes, good.
Yes. What that means, Penny, is sometimes you go to the meeting and new stuff that people, even Assembly members haven't seen, shows up, and everyone is going, what's this? And actually, that is a function of the chair and the majority's tolerance for that. And they can choose what they do or don't do, and we could articulate what we think should be the policy, so that the latitude is small. Okay, Cheryl?
I went through the papers as well, and it's on the bottom of the one-pager from the City and Borough of Juneau Charter excerpts. All persons shall have an opportunity to be heard if the ordinance is amended after the hearing. As to any matter of major substance, would be a treat to find out, the ordinance shall be treated as a newly introduced ordinance.
Citgo?
Juneau. Juneau, I don't know how in the heck they decide major substance.
We might actually ask that question, Amanda, if you would ask the Juneau clerk how they evaluate it, that'd be spectacular. Gotcha. We've got Cheryl, Alice, and Tim. Cheryl?
That was it.
I apologize.
I just did my thing, yeah.
Alice? Tim?
My concern that I want to express, again, based on experience, is that as municipal attorneys go, so do some of the definitions or interpretations of the law of how it's governed. And I would hope that if we come up with guidelines, that they are guidelines that can't be superseded by a different definition to plead a certain administration. And that would be rather important. I guess the other thing is that laid-on-the-table items, there are some things that either slip through a crack, or have to happen, or there may be a lost opportunity for the city to get grant money or something else unless they take action by a certain time, and in that type of case, it may need to rise to the level of having a vote of a supermajority of eight members to actually accept a laid-on-the-table item. But I don't want to...
But I don't wanna totally rule out that because there may be something that we just have to get done.
And there is a, in statute, there is an emergency ordinance, and there's even a definition of what emergency is, but it's being on to say that such things exist. Okay.
Can I throw one quick thing? Bob, one other thing about your organizations that just crossed my mind is don't forget, I don't think you had it with Fish and Game and Community Council quite as much as the issue with church affiliations, nothing personal, Penny.
Oh, that's fine.
But after the summer of hate of sixty-four, the faith-based organization and giving them fifteen minutes is, from my end, a little terrifying. So I wanted to throw that out.
Understood. And another issue you brought up, we didn't treat businesses as organizations under our testimony rules.
Things have to be defined, but when you start looking at that, and especially when you're talking civil rights issues and stuff like that within our community, it could get really nasty, really dangerous, frankly.
Fair, well, couldn't it be not? But thank you so much.
I'm representing the Interfaith Council as a 501(c) nonprofit. We don't, and we're not an individual faith-based, and I agree with you about the individual faith-based on that particular issue. That was, they shouldn't be having fifteen minutes or whatever, but as a 501(c), I think we are an organization, and I think our organization... I'm also president of the Larks Group, it's 501(c). I think we should be able to maybe get fifteen minutes for organizations. If they're a smaller organization, get that time, but... Right, there's a difference between the Interfaith Council, what I represent here, and the Congress Special Own, then I, you know, then I...
Joelle, I was gonna go to, just kinda, if I can, just jump onto item D, the Form D written testimony.
Yes.
We've had a couple ideas floating around the group, and I think Carol and I were talking about it in the hallway. We all have the ability to email our Assembly members, and that's a very important way to communicate your personal, to add more to your personal three minutes. But I'd be very interested in getting a platform, and I think Carolyn, actually, Carolyn has some ideas about how to do this electronically, and actually just have you take that step. Because I think, I think your idea that you were talking about in the hallway is very interesting.
If we wanted to go to an electronic format for testimony, a couple of things. My first thing that I wanna state completely clarifying is that electronic format must never, ever replace or be used to limit in-person public testimony, period, ever. So that's gonna be my first clarification on it. The second thing would be to make, for lack of better words, like a message board, AKA an Anchorage Facebook page, although not through Facebook. But that where you would have to sign up with your actual name, your residential address, couple of other, you know, maybe your birthday, whatever, some identifier that they can go through and actually clarify that this is who you are. And then you can go ahead and log your public testimony on. The back door to this could also be that if I'm in Dick Trainee's district, it automatically sends the message to his inbox that says, "By the way, this is your district that just sent this to you." But that when I log on, I can submit my testimony there. Everybody that is part of this, or every, actually, I don't think, whether you're a user up here or not, I think it should be open to everybody. Whether you choose to log in and leave comments would be another board or another section of it, but everybody should be able to read it. That when my public comment is posted, my name is posted with that. You can picture anything, but my name is attached to that. You don't get to be, you know, Snowboarder Forty-Three.
Right.
Your name is attached to that public comment.
Yeah.
And that way, everything is, it's as close as you can get to physically showing up and testifying and presenting that this is who I am, but still leave it in a public forum that other people can read. But you're also gonna wind up with the slope of who's gonna monitor the message board? Because that's gonna have to be paid for and kept tabs on. So who's gonna monitor that, and how is that whole system going to work? And then where are the dollars gonna come from to fund that system? Because it's gonna be an entity in and of itself that's gonna have to be built. And I'm not a technology critter to build it, but I kinda got a few ideas on how it should be built and how it should work. Did I miss anything?
No, I just think it's a really interesting concept, because there was a lot of reference to this type of thing during the testimony on AO sixty-three, only it was a little simpler than that, as if an email should completely replace public testimony, which I don't think anybody here believes that that is a suitable way to governance. But I do like the idea, because it helps, the idea of the depth of knowledge that an individual could have, that they could be lending to the dialogue, that you can't maybe get out with three minutes. I reflect back to thirty-seven, and the police, the police technicians who do the, they're the ones who run the place where they store all the evidence, the evidence technicians, you know, that their testimony, it was only three minutes long. Luckily, they planned it out in series so they could kinda like cover all of the thing. Clearly a huge issue that had not been fully thought through, that in a coordinated effort in a series of three-minute testimonies, they were able to sufficiently convince the Assembly that you couldn't outsource a job, somebody who guards, you know, a million dollars worth of cocaine, a hundred thousand dollars in cash. You need to kinda have a note a little bit about those folks. So, you know, there, you know, I believe they probably wrote their first boards. I don't know what they have to do for those people, but this idea of that, that kind of written testimony where you could get a really in-depth understanding of an issue so that the public can understand an issue, the Assembly members may actually understand the issue. Like if I was having a planning and zoning, I wouldn't really know anything, but if I was reading on the message board, or, you know, I could call Tim, or I could read on the message board and watch informed people have a dialogue. It makes me a better citizen, right? Because you don't actually get that in a three-minute, you know, repartee at the Assembly. So I love the idea, but I acknowledge it's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I want to get to a part, just as a, oh, by the way, written testimony is something that I learned that I did not know, that if I made email Dick Trainee or LV or Tim, I'd emailed him, so what? It's not part of public testimony. I, in order for my public testimony to be considered part of the public record, it has to go through the municipal clerk. And instead, I'm sitting there trying to be efficient and email everybody individually. Well, that was just dumb, because I didn't know that that's how it worked. And I've been running around politics for a while, and I missed that one completely. So this would also eliminate part of that issue.
Thank you. And I wanna come in a couple of times. One is I talked a little bit with Amanda about this, and I know that Jennifer Johnson serves on the Board of the Municipal League, and they are looking at the question of the public record, the establishment of an electronic public record for state issues so that small communities can be heard as well as large communities when they're dealing with a statewide issue. I think it is really important that we have a place where all the comments are. So I could go and look at what developers said versus what constituencies said. I could go see what one community of interest has to say versus another and see it all. And that, and that, that that is going to be not a Facebook page. It's the public record. It's managed, paid for by the municipal government as a part of establishing a mechanism for the repository of public record. One piece of the public record is a testimony that occurs at the Assembly, verbal, and the other piece of the record is all the written stuff that anybody wrote to anybody that makes it possible for everyone to sort through it. Now, it may be a bit of a challenge, and so organizing it is a pretty critical issue in terms of being able to make it usable. But my notion is that we live in a world where we have the technology to be able to accomplish this. I have no idea how much it costs, but I do know that one of the reasons that we are trying to achieve our recommendations is to be able to meet the municipal budget process which occurs, they start this January thirtieth, so that we are in the queue saying, "By the way, if you really wanted to improve your communication structure, this is one piece, and we estimate it to cost X or Y, and we think you should do it." So I'm just saying that the public record is not a, oh, by the way, in my mind, it is foundational to everyone being able to be on the same sheet of music, whether you're a physi, and the, so, period. With that, we have Bob and Tim. Bob?
I also totally support the idea of giving people the option of putting information in writing. Some folks just don't like to speak, and they don't feel they're very good at it. And a parallel that I've used is when the Board of Game meets, they have, we have what we call a board book. And what that is, is people, everything from a note on a three-by-five card to a letter, and it was organized by proposal, and all the, as a board member, you had that book, and you were responsible to read that, and they were invaluable. I, sometimes it was only a page, but it was so insightful. And these are people you, I don't know the kind of torture you'd have to engage them in to get them up in front of the, I could be just, but it was invaluable in making good decisions, and I think it would be great. I've had numerous people talk to me, ask that same question, is there any way we could testify in writing? And I think it'd be a huge plus. I would definitely support that.
But that becomes part of the public record.
Absolutely. Absolutely a best.
Tim.
Well, I was gonna ask Amanda, and you brought up a good point, that you sent all these emails to Assembly people, and that wasn't a official record.
No.
In the record. What happens to all of the emails that all sorts of different people send to Assembly people, and Assembly people send to others if it's on the official, their unique email address?
As far as the public record goes, the ones that are sent to the MAS Assembly are the ones that the Clerk's Office retains as part of the permanent file, and we keep it with the items that they're referencing. I can't speak to, the Clerk's Office does not maintain individual Assembly members' email communications in a hard copy version.
But...
When you, maintain means a hard copy?
Yeah.
But they are, so anything that I send in to Trainee's municipal email address, even though it may not become part of the public record, you have it electronically?
I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that. I can only speak directly to the MAS Assembly, because I know that we go through and keep those. I can...
Again, speaking to the whole transparency thing and making sure that all the information's available.
Yeah.
That may be something that we wanna make sure.
I can get additional information. So are you talking, just to clarify, when I ask questions, for, just in general, or if it's requested as part of like a public records request, or?
I think that if I, interested in a subject, wanted to see what my Assembly people and even my representatives from my neighborhood were emailing or getting emails from and about, I'd like to be able to, be able to check that somehow. Second part of my question, that was number one, and since Trainee's not here, I'll go ahead and ask a question.
Ask Tim. Ask Tim, too.
And what do you do with your emails?
Well, but Trainee's the one that brought it up before about how he wasn't gonna let anybody speak that wasn't a resident.
Right.
And when you go through some of the information about public testimony and that, and some of the other locations that Amanda gave us, there is a requirement that, I never saw where it said if you weren't a resident, you couldn't speak, but you had to say your name and spell it and give your address as well. And I'm assuming that was so that people could actually know who it was that was testifying and where they were from.
Yeah.
So that, you know, if they weren't gonna be kept from speaking at a public hearing, that was noticed publicly, but at least the action body would be able to tell whether that testimony was coming in, in an attempt to be a special entry group or possibly a party that isn't a taxpayer. And I think that's worthy of being taken into consideration.
Okay. Sure. Any other discussion on the subject of establishment, potential establishment of a public record?
Sort of relates, I'd sure like to talk about eliminating the dinner break for the Assemblies.
Well, they might be...
Are we setting a specific time for them?
No. I mean, I attended a lot of meetings, and the standard rule of thumb is you either eat before you get there, or you eat after you leave. But to break in the middle of an Assembly meeting for a dinner break just seems to be, it just is like a slap in the face to those that showed up. You know, I'll, just through the Chair, I'll comment on that, having watched it a long time. I think the most frustrating thing is that they say they're gonna break for fifteen or twenty minutes and come back, and then forty-five to fifty minutes later, they come back.
Yeah.
That's what's frustrating. You know, if they're meeting and starting at five, you know, they've been busy through the day, and I think it's appropriate between the business of the city and then going on to the public hearings and unfinished public business, that there should be a break, but there should be a timeframe. Just like appearance requests are at six o'clock, and they take those at six o'clock. Everything else is held off, and they take them at six so people know when they're supposed to be there. If they take a half hour every time for dinner, then the public knows when that's gonna be. Just a counterpoint. I asked on the Equal Rights Commission, we meet at six, and the reason we meet at six is because it's understood you will have a meal, if you wish one, prior. And how we resolve that is we pop one. We, you know, and they always take their chances when I cook. But, you know, we meet it, we're in the room at five-thirty, and between five-thirty and six, who's ever in the room? And by the way, if you wanna attend an Equal Rights Commission, sometimes the food's really good.
Is there a list of which way?
And then the meetings start, yeah, exactly. I'll call you when I meet again.
Is there public notice when there's gonna be good food versus?
Well, if you wish to have any...
Talk to me kindly. I could work out a system. That seems inconsistent.
It is inconsistent.
I think that's, it's a really good point about the time. Tim, still?
Yeah, just a couple of things, and then I've got to go a bit. Good discussion, folks. I really enjoyed it. The, probably the meal break or not, meals served or not, is contentious either. That's a budgetary, too, to be mindful. But the agenda is developed such that you have certain things started at certain times, and if you finish it, then, you know, what do you do? You know, you sit there and you wait, and, because you can't start something else until the published time. And so part of that is that scheduling issue. You have people on notice, but you're right. I mean, it's only polite, but if you say you're going to take a half-hour break, you don't take forty-five minutes or whatever, so on and so forth. So that point, I think, is good. I would be careful to, to think about putting everything so hard and fast, and I don't think people are thinking that. What we want to do, I think, is encourage public testimony, any way, shape, or form. And you, you need to assume, sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't, that the Assembly people and the Chair specifically is there for good intentions, wants to run a good meeting, wants to hear what the issues are, but also wants to keep on time and so on and so forth. So at some point, I think it's good to give some guidance as to, we wanna encourage public testimony. We wanna, I mean, some of those guidelines, rather than hard, fast rules that are, that don't allow for some flexibility in terms of testimony. So that's just my observation, but it's a good discussion. I can see both sides of any particular issue. You know, one side comes up, "Yeah," and the other side says something, "Well, yeah, that's right." You know, so I argue with myself about the whole thing, and I think you guys will come up with some great stuff.
Just make sure, Joelle, give yourself three minutes when you're arguing with yourself.
Yeah. Three sides.
Well, you know, the institution question, and a lot of time, and organization versus individuals, all good discussions, because those are issues that make a difference in... Well, we have to assume that everybody on the Assembly comes with an open mind, and they do hear the testimony, and they do hear the discussions. So S versions come up as a result of that. But at some point in time, but to introduce something that you know is flawed, that's never gonna pass, and only take testimony on that is not right here. So you guys have got all the questions out there, you just need to find the solution.
Thank you, Tim.
Good luck.
One last question I have for the group is the process for the continuation of public hearing appears to be cattywampus and arbitrary capricious in my judgment. hearing appears to be cattywampus and arbitrary and capricious in my judgment. And so my question to the group is, should we try to normalize the continuation of a public hearing so that somebody who actually showed up has a clue and some predictability about when they should come again? And it used to be that you would be at the next meeting and the next meeting was known and so you'd know what the date was. But of late, meaning the last few years, it's confusing to me. So I seek any guidance that anybody has about what we say about, if a public hearing is to be continued because they've run out of time, do we want to provide them with some guidance about what would make it most predictable for the public to know when they're gonna come again?
Do we want to do that? I would say yes.
I am saying yes. I'm saying I think we should. My, I believe that they should do it at the next meeting, but I think the next meeting sometimes gets rolled into two or three later. Go ahead, Amanda.
I think this is a good topic for conversation. I think things to consider is if the assembly decides that they want to add a work session or if they want to add time for an S version, I think that we need to make sure that that's involved in the discussion too. Because sometimes they determine that they need to continue because stuff has come up during the public testimony that is valid concerns, and so maybe they wanna sit down and have a work session. So I think we need, we should look at that at the same time.
How do they currently handle it?
It doesn't seem to be in a, I mean, I think that there's, I don't think that they're just arbitrarily choosing an assembly meeting schedule too. I think that sometimes they're maybe trying to get something heard by the Public Safety Committee meeting, the Public Safety Committee, and they only meet once a month, so they're just gonna try and have it at the meeting after that. So I think that it does maybe seem as though they're just randomly choosing a date, but I think that sometimes there's other factors that are going into that. Or maybe they know that there's a couple of big issues on the next upcoming agenda and it might be better to put it off until the meeting after that so that this item can actually have some time for discussion. So I think just as we have the conversation, to be aware of those things too.
I had a--
Sure.
This is just a little selfish approach to it. I understand that the electronics are going to be changed over. I thought I saw a contract come through for new electronics in the meeting room, the assembly meeting.
Okay. I know that we're looking at new agenda management, but I can't speak to--
This is, maybe it's still germane then. I was thinking, as a citizen walking in, I would love it if there was a reader board that told me the status of a big deal or a hearing, if they've changed it, if they've postponed it, just give me the status in writing so I don't have to hang around hoping that the chair will tell us that the decision came before I walked in.
Kind of like your flight status, is it departing, is it working, is it still, is it, oh, is it left?
I think that's a really good idea.
Really good idea.
Joel.
Jane, because one of the other issues is that, you know, in 37 as an example, the continuation of testimony was the next day and then the next day and then the next day. So it wasn't two weeks, it was 24 hours later than 48 and then maybe to the next week. So it feels like we have the two-week timeframe is like, which actually could be four or it could be tomorrow.
Right.
And so it's a really complicated question because you could string it out for weeks and weeks and weeks, and that also seems like you, they're gonna really balk at the idea that if they have a really big issue, that they have to limit it to the testimony, physically limit it to a meeting time. I think we'll get an enormous amount of pushback from the assembly itself when we do that, that they want to have the ability to schedule--
Yeah, that's true.
Individual meetings because they don't want to have their whole year calendar pushed back by public testimony on a specific contentious item. But it does speak to the issue of how much notice does the public deserve for that? Like, can they schedule 24 hours later? Does that mean that only the people, the human beings who are in the room to hear it that night know that there's a public testimony in 24 hours?
Right.
They're relying on the other groups to do it? So I kind of bring that up as the secondary answer to that, is I think pushing big items off into assembly meetings is a non-starter for the assembly. So the question is how, what is a sufficient timeframe in our mind for the public to understand there's gonna be a standalone meeting? Because if really contentious issues, that's what happens.
And I have Andy and Carolyn and I, yes. And maybe what this really requires is a conversation with the assembly members to say, what do we do? Because it's confusing for everybody and it might even be confusing to you. So Andy and Carolyn.
I was gonna say, in AO 37, the context was, are we gonna have another night? And that wasn't even certain when it was gonna be, it was sort of secondary to that. So we really need to answer the question first, does the assembly believe that everybody has the right to be heard? Or do they believe that they need to have a certain amount of public testimony in order to satisfy the charter? And there are clearly people on both sides of that on the assembly right now. If they believe they need to run 10 hours at maximum and then they can move on, that's a little easier to manage. But if you believe that the charter says that every person that wants to be heard on something is willing to show up, gets to speak, then it's more complicated. And that's, I think we need to know that.
I don't think they have the choice, by the way.
I think we need to tell them what we think of.
I guess it depends on whether you ask the city attorney currently.
We have Carolyn and then Tim, but bullshit.
Can we second the buzzer?
I'm with you. I saw this. Carolyn and then--
And I agree with what Joelle says, that we definitely need to get something in because we've seen two extremes. We saw every night where we didn't know whether testimony was gonna continue on 37 or not because I was, I mean, I was there when they cut it off, and I didn't get to testify. So we got to sit there and watch that happen. At the same time, I was there on the library lawn for 64, that it was drug out every other week for three and a half, fifteen months.
Right.
So that's literally two extremes of what happened, and we've seen it done. So I am in agreement that that's part of what we should be doing here is not asking the assembly, my personal opinion, not asking them, well, do you think public testimony should be cut off? No. Everybody gets the right to speak. That's something that these two women put into our municipal charter.
Fair enough to me.
And so--
In our wisdom, we'll laugh here.
They're still saying today that everybody gets the right to speak. So then everybody gets the right to speak, and this is how the assembly should handle that.
Okay, we have, Tim.
Yeah, I absolutely believe that there is no question that everybody that wants to speak on a topic should be able to speak and interest the assembly on that topic. The hard part comes then, you have your notice time for your public hearing, and that's when you're supposed to be there to be able to speak on it. And at those times, maybe it's that first hearing that if you're there and you sign up on a list, you're guaranteed that you're gonna get your chance to speak. But when it goes to special, if, you know, they've got 200 people that sign up, and obviously at three minutes a piece, you're not gonna make it through. So then they identify how many special meetings are gonna continue, but it's gonna be worked off of that list. And they can go through the list and every time they go through the name and the person's not there, they drop down at the bottom and after the third time they roll through, they're gone. But if you have a deal where it goes from, you've got this group of people that showed up, and then you're gonna hold a special meeting and a whole bunch of other people show up, you hold another special meeting and there's just a continuous draw of people in, that's a tough one for me to deal with. And I don't know how you deal with it, except to say that this is our scheduled meeting, this is when you get a chance to be there. If we can't get the work done, you're gonna be guaranteed a chance to speak and communicate with your assembly people and sign up on the list, and we'll take it up for the next few nights until we get through the list.
We have Penny.
Just a comment on that is there are people, if some of these are Tuesday nights, people can't come on a Tuesday night, they want to testify, they can't come to sign up. But then they hear that there's gonna be an assembly meeting on Thursday night on the same subject. If you still want to testify, why can't they testify? Why do they have to be limited by the particular day the assembly meets when they maybe do something they can't get away from? That's not, you know, that's not letting everybody testify.
Well, if there wasn't a bunch of people there to speak and there were only 10 people that showed up on a night, they'd be here Tuesday night. Now, if that person, it's no different if they had a job or they worked that night, then they have to get some other method of getting their testimony. And because I don't think the assembly's gonna meet seven days a week.
Which is why electronic systems--
And we need to have reasonable methods for people that have, can't meet that time for it to do it. And you go to different jurisdictions outside of Alaska, and they do their meetings during the workday. Some of them do them at night, some of them cross over and try and bridge the gap. And there is no perfect answer. It's impossible to do that.
And I think that, we have Cheryl and Carol. I was gonna put you in and say, I think that what you need is a structure for signing up that is electronic and in person on the night that it was, did. And the electronic sign up has a cutoff period and the meeting date has a cutoff period. And even if you can't go to the meeting on Tuesday night, you can do the electronic sign up and you may or may not be able to be there. But that, and the sign up may, will apply to if they meet again. But that there's a period of time when you can do it electronically as well as if meeting place, and that becomes the list. That's my proposal. Okay, Carolyn and Cheryl. Cheryl first.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate that I agree with Dick Trainee insofar as restrictions on public testimony through AO 37, 30, excuse me, 63. Were a solution in search of a problem. And so I really agree that if you've got hundreds of people, you're gonna have to sit through it. You created the mess that generated hundreds of people. Now you need to listen, hear what they had to say. That's my two cents.
Carol.
I am in complete agreement with that. And yes, it does matter if there's 10 people compared to if there is 500 people that show up because you pissed off that big of a portion of the city. And if there's only 10 people that show up, obviously there's only 10 people that are irritated enough to come, or there's 10 people that are proud enough and happy enough and want to come say thank you, which isn't normally what happens. So let's look at this honestly, but if you have, you've packed the parking lot, there is no more places to park. They're packing the Century Theater across that. Our bus system is so wonderful that you can really take the bus to this and actually go home at night. We know that's not gonna happen. So you can't just say, well, if there's 10 people, if there's 300, it's the same thing because it's not. And that's just the bottom line. The bottom line is when you have made that big of a portion of the city mad, guess what? You get to listen to it. Because obviously what you did was not bridge the gap to begin with from where you started to where you started public testimony.
Okay. With that, I want to say, we're almost at the end of our meeting. What Bob and I are gonna do is write up the ideas and send them back to you as discreet topics then and considerations that have been presented here so that at the next meeting, we're actually looking at refining some ideas. If your idea didn't get discussed or hasn't been presented or you want to expand on it, please email me and I will make sure that it gets out to everybody else. We are scheduled to meet on August 22nd, and at that time, we are also going to be preparing for the public hearing, which is going to be on September 3rd and follow up when I prefer. So I'm just telling you that that's what our work is. But Bob and I are gonna write up what we heard you say yesterday, last meeting and today, so that we've got discreet topics that we are looking at. If anybody else wants to participate, they're welcome to join us.
Is that gonna be a written product for the public hearing or is this just open-ended? Did we go there?
And we get to decide that. And one notion was that we would have a public hearing at the beginning of the process to say, hey, y'all, what do you think? And that we would have a public hearing at the end of the process that would say, here's your recommendation.
Right.
I think if we could give people a clue what we're thinking about, it would be a more fruitful conversation at the original public hearing. That's my opinion.
Yeah, my bias too.
Any other comments? Amanda?
I guess it's something we can discuss at the most, maybe there's different ways that we can inform the public of our ideas before we get to meeting.
I agree. So an agenda earlier than the day of, the day before that we've been before. Gotcha, gotcha. Joel.
One last thought process in the last discussion about public testimony, how to do public testimony and the volume of public testimony. Let's go back to our S1, S2, S3 conversation. Because if you sign up day one and it's on S1, you know, you by all rights, you should absolutely get to comment on S2. So I just want to add that it's way more complicated than one night of test, one night of signing up. Because what we were saying collectively as a group is that the S version--
That's a good point.
Way we do business, it isn't that it's always, it's not that it's always abused, it's that it always precludes knowledgeable comment from the public. It always precludes that because there's almost never a way that they have access to S2. So I just want to bring that up because we need to be thinking about this as, it's a flow. This is a flowing process from stage one to end product, sometimes takes three versions. And the public should be able to have that comment on all of those.
And maybe the Juno version gives us some guidance about what we could recommend for our organization about how to work with an S2 as a new idea.
Very briefly. It's been my opinion, you know, coming and going, that a sign up sheet can be used as convenience for the chair and for the people who are there, but it should not be exclusive in any way. But that it is a tool, or you can use it flexibly or not, to just kind of organize big crowds and give people a clue about timing and volume. But it would not be restricted.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Tim?
So for our public meeting, hearing so to speak, I get the chair's thoughts on 500 people show up, how are you gonna handle them?
We're gonna keep on going.
Keep on going.
If we, if we have, I mean, if we have 500 people who want to talk to us, mine, I'd be great. And I think you should plan on--
That's what we preached.
The rest of that week, be--
So we'd take the first 10 and--
He needs to talk.
We just have the 10 people we'd like.
And we pick the 10.
You'll pass the gavel to him.
Thank you for a fabulous meeting. You have seen so efficiently.
If we do have a number of, it's my intention that that is, that week, we meet on that day and that we would try and do it the next couple of days because--
That's what I wanted to find out, so that's the plan. I don't have a problem with that. I just want to block out that week.
Jane is a member of the public, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay.
Well done, Jane. Thank you so much.
Anything that I'm listening would like to comment on?
I think it's a very interesting discussion. I'm like Tim Steele, I hear one side and I think it's great, then I hear the other side. But, you know, because with AO 64, there weren't parameters for testimony, people were flying up from Seattle, busting from the valley, it was continued over months. So the makeup of the assembly chain, so rather than passing with eight votes, it passed with seven and it was vetoed. So I think there's a lot of things to take into consideration and I'm glad I'm not part of your group.
Don't be too satisfied, yes.
Thank you, one and all. Bevel, a big hand to Amanda. Thank you for mentioning it.